Hello guys, everyone. It's good to meet these small people. I've got the secret here. And I'm the one over here. You can sit here. We still have the line at the door. Can I have some of these muscles, please? Thanks for the stuff.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That says, "doesn't need this."
Yeah.
Hello, my online. It's good to meet small people. I've got the secret here. And I'm the one over here. You can sit here. We still have the line at the door. Can I have some of these muscles, please? Thanks for the stuff.
Oh, yeah, I'm a yama.
Yes. You're not. 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 All right, so we still have people coming in at the door, but we say goodbye. Go ahead and get started. Aloha, and thank you for being here tonight. I'm Yancy Carsmith, president of Waimea Community Association. I'd like to introduce the rest of the board. Our vice president, Mary Beth Leachek, is not feeling well tonight. Uh, Gretchen, I hope Ryan Victor made it, okay? Um, Secretary Lani Olson-Sean, Directors Ryan Smith, David Greenwell, Taddy Cook, Chris Wong, Ryan Ushijima, Leela Park, and Michael Bruno, welcome. Thank you for being here. We're streaming live on our WCA Facebook page as well on our YouTube channel, which can be found on our website, wameatown.org. The recording will be made available for later viewing. Happy to have those of you who could join us this person. Thank you. I'm told that, um, we have a capacity here, and I don't know whether we've reached it or not, but somebody will have to count and maybe wanna make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do here. If you haven't already done so, we encourage you to become a member of WCA. You can do this at the sign-in desk. You can join on our website or by mailing a check to our post office boss, which is on the agenda. We appreciate your support, and any memberships received starting this month of September will go toward 2025. A few housekeeping items for this space. There's no eating in this room, and no photography in this room, except by wardhammers. We have bottled water out there for you, for yourself. There's two bathrooms, one by the front door and one down the hallway. We're grateful to be here at this community center. We thank Mark and Lynn Benioff for their continued support of our organization and our community. And we thank Rebecca Barnes, who's the property manager here. Also, Mike Cooper and Marshall Taniharua are also here on behalf of the Benios, who weren't able to join us tonight. Uh, presenters would keep their eye on David Greenwell, who is in the parking lot at the moment, but might be gone for now. Um, so anyone presenting, we will be keeping track of time and keeping an eye on his chair right here. Also, let me acknowledge James Huesis, who's come to our rescue when Mary Beth got sick today. We need an IT. It's not simple doing all this and with the presentations as well. So, thank you, James. Appreciate it. All right. As we continue our tradition of honoring and respecting the various faith-based groups that make up Waimea, we welcome Father David from St. James Church for our opening prayer. Thank you.
Aloha. I like that you're having me tonight. Thank you also for, uh, blessing of being able to share a little bit. Terry Greenwell will tell you about the Gathering of Places project and the community meal is actually taking place right now. Thank you to everybody for the support and help. Thank you for the opportunity to offer the pulle tonight in a space where every time worship is offered, Mr. Mai says, "It's offered and remembered that love God with all our hearts, soul, mind, and strength." We do that by caring and loving one another. Hey, pulle kaka for this right. We come together as a community, God, and we come together in friendship. We come together in care of one another as you call us to do. We ask that you bless this time together, that are words that we say, the intentions of our hearts, that are minds. We focused on how we live out love and grace and mercy exhibited in you towards one another. We gather in our community, we think of all those places in our world, in our nation, in our other islands, in our own island home, that are in need of your grace. We think about our sisters and brothers on Maui, remembrance of the year gone by, the weight, tragic fires, and all of us who offered care and help to recover. Minds or thought, thinking about those in the school shooting in Georgia. We pray for our children. We pray for all our Kiki. We pray especially for those who are suffering right now. We pray for those who are in need of your help in their healing. We pray for those who mourn. We be thankful for this association, this gathering, to make decisions, to think out ways in which our life together is held with one another. Especially as we care for those who are least fortunate among us, those who are in need of our help. We pray for those who have the ability to. In this time in which our world seems so divided at times, there's war and conflict, and our own political struggles and divisions. We pray that this be a sign of witness. Our coming here tonight is a sign and witness of our different opinions and desires that come together in oneness and see the common good achieved. We ask that this not only be a time of unity among us and amongst our diversity, but also witness to the world and how to accomplish it. We ask this in God's holy name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have an update from Waimea Police Department. Captain Roy and then Community Police Officer Justin Mahalaplani, for your work in our community.
Thank you. Aloha. My name is Roy Valera, and, uh, welcome to the meeting. Uh, at this hour, I'm gonna have the mic over to our community police officer, Justin Kabante, who has some community events and statistics information.
Hello, everybody. Well, thank you for all coming out to come see us too, give you guys a report. Anyway, someone else, this coffee with a cup, we're gonna have it at the end of the month, on the 27th, at the new Kohala Coffee Company, Michaela Village. We were up in town last, uh, last month, so we're gonna go out there, capture a new audience. That starts at seven o'clock, if you guys are interested. And also, our newsletter will be coming out shortly, so be on the lookout for that. Uh, if you wanna subscribe to it, WCA No Salah, contact me, and I can add you to our subscriber list. Just real quick, um, in a nutshell, our crimes, crime report for the month of August. We did have seven assaults, one burglary, five criminal property damages, and 15 deaths. We also had one auto theft and one, uh, UBI where somebody made entry without permission into somebody else's vehicle. Um, for traffic, traffic, um, statistics, officers are out there patrolling. They did work hard. They issued, uh, for the month of August, in total, 744 citations. They were able to get two DUIs last month and 261 speeding citations. The next highest one was 202 regulatory citation, and there's still 25 over electronic device or cell phone citations. Um, there was six major traffic collisions last month, and they addressed 41 reckless driver calls, also last month. Um, and I bring this one up because the captain's gonna talk about it, but there was six child restraint citations issued last month. So, uh, please, um, just do our best to secure our Kiki moment in our vehicle. I'm gonna give it back to the captain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. You know, you know, when we read that number about citations issued, it's not a number that we like to report. Um, what we want is each and every one of you here today, go talk to your ohana and tell them, "Follow all the traffic laws," so that the next Waimea Community Association meeting will be comfortable. We can say, "You know what, guys? Hey, we gave zero tickets this past month." I know someone's gonna say, "Hey, Roy, just tell you guys we don't give any tags." But, you know, we're, we're there to keep everyone safe. And along in, in that, um, idea of keeping everyone safe is to protect those that cannot protect themselves. Who I'm talking about are the kids, yeah? And more specifically, because I just became a grandpa. Thank you. More specifically, let's talk about car, uh, car seats, uh, for children. And, you know, back in the day, well, it makes me sound old when I say that, but back in the day, you just find a car seat for the kid inside, strap him down, and you're good to go, right? Well, you know, there's, there's a little bit more than just doing that. You gotta find the right car seats, right? You have to have it installed correctly. And, um, nowadays, you have to check that the car seat is still good, because just like with everything else, they issue recalls on them, yeah? So, if you follow those basic steps, find the right car seat for the, for the, for your child, you know, 'cause as they grow, you gotta get different seats. Install the car seat, uh, properly, and keep, uh, checking whether or not there's a recall on the car seat. And I wanted to say that on September 15th to 21st, uh, NIZA, which is the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, is, uh, celebrating and honoring, um, National Child Safety Seat Week. And if you are a brand-new grandparent, just like me, you can come to the station, and Officer Kabante is one of our certified child safety seat installation, um, professionals. So, we can help you, um, install the seat correctly and safely, so that you can keep your Kiki safe. And with that, I'd like to thank you very much, and I'll, um, pass it like that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Cap, just wanna say, thank you for having you guys, even going to the back roads, you know, swing by, 'cause there's, you know, kids hanging out and stuff. So, thank you, guys, again. All the back roads covering up Mahalaplani. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have community of nonsense. There's a bunch of them, and, um, I will go through them rather quickly. So, there's a lot going on this weekend across the district, starting in North Kohala on Saturday. There's a Ho'olalea, known as Kapuna, honoring North Kohala grandparents at the Resilience Hub Barn from 12 to 6:00. Kahilo Theater presents John Cruise and Two Shows on Saturday, 2 PM and 7 PM. Queen Liliokalani's Birthday Celebration in Hilo is at the Liliokalani Gardens between 10 and 3:00. And still on Saturday, in Waikoloa, at the Staples, Saddles, Psalms, and Sunsets between 5 and 8:00. Another Narcan giveaway will take place at KTA September 14th. Appreciate that that continues. Uh, Waimea Family Food Truck Friday, hosted by Captain, sponsored by Now Pocket Events, will be on Friday, September 20th this month, between 4 and 8:00. Saturday, September 21st, will be the long anticipated return of the Panjalo Festival, Ho'olalea and Parade. The parade starts at 10:00 AM at, um, Waimea Park, and the Ho'olalea starts at 11:30. This is the 72nd annual. Uh, there's been a little respite, but they are back. We appreciate everybody who's been working on that. Thank you. Waikato County Planning Department, their general plan engagement community meetings. I think there are down to just a few left. Um, the one in Waimea will be at Ko'ia'ohale on September 23rd, and in North Kohala on October 1st. Uh, September 28th, the Kahilo Town Hall Civil Defense will host a disaster preparedness fair. Waimea Community Association and others will be on hand to support the efforts to keep us all better prepared. This sounded fun. Um, Queen's North Waikato Community Hospital will participate and encourage all to join in the world's largest pet walk. Saturday, September 28th, beginning at 8:00 AM at the corner of Kupalani and Ala'okea. You don't have to have a pet, but pets are to be unleashed. Discover your fully
friendship, come together and care of one another as you call us to do. We ask that you bless this time together, that are words that we say, the intentions of our hearts, that are minds. We focused on how we live out love and grace and mercy exhibited in you towards one another. We gather in our community, we think of all those places in our world, in our nation, in our other islands, in our own island home, that are in need of your grace. We think about our sisters and brothers on Maui. Remembrance of the year gone by, the weight of tragic fires and all the suffering we offer care and help to recover. Minds or thought, thinking about those in the school shooting in Georgia. We pray for our children, we pray for all our Kiki, and we pray especially for those who are suffering right now. We pray for those who are in need of your help and their healing. We pray for those who mourn. We be thanked for this association, this gathering to make decisions, to think out ways in which our life together is held with one another. Especially as we care for those who are least fortunate among us, those who are in need of our help, we pray for those who have the ability to. In this time in which our world seems so divided at times, there's war and conflict, and our own political struggles and divisions, we pray that this be a sign of witness. Our coming here tonight is a sign and witness of our different opinions and desires that come together in oneness and see the common good achieved. We ask that this not only be a time of unity among us amidst our diversity, but also witness to the world and how to accomplish it. We ask this in God's holy name. Amen.
Thank you very much. That is lovely. Next, we will have an update from Waimea Police Department, Captain Roy, and then Community Police Officer Justin Mahalo for the work of your community.
Thank you. Aloha. My name is Roy Valera, and welcome to the meeting. At this hour, I'm going to hand the mic over to our community police officer, Justin Kabante, who has some community events and statistics information.
Hello, everybody. Well, thank you for all coming out to come see us too, give you guys a report. Anyway, some announcement, coffee with a cup, we're gonna have it at the end of the month, on the 27th, at the new Kohala Coffee Company, Michaela Village. We were up in town last month, so I'm gonna go out there, capture a new audience. That starts at 7 o'clock if you guys are interested. And also, our newsletter will be coming out shortly, so be on the lookout for that. If you wanna subscribe to it, WCA knows how to contact me, and I can add you to our subscriber list. Just real quick, in a nutshell, our crime report for the month of August. We did have seven assaults, one burglary, five criminal property damages, and 15 deaths. We also had one auto theft and one UBI where somebody made entry without permission into somebody else's vehicle. For traffic statistics, officers are out there patrolling, they did work hard. They issued for the month of August, in total, 744 citations. They were able to get two DUIs last month and 261 speeding citations. The next highest one was 202 regulatory citation, and there's still 25 over electronic device or cell phone citations. There was six major traffic collisions last month, and they addressed 41 reckless driver calls, also last month. And I bring this one up because the captain's gonna talk about it, but there was six child restraint citations issued last month. So please, just do our best to secure our Kiki moment in our vehicle. I'm gonna give it back to the captain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. You know, when we read that number about citations issued, it's not a number that we like to report. What we want is each and every one of you here today, go talk to your Ohana and tell them, follow all the traffic laws, so that the next Waimea Community Association meeting we come to, we can say, you know what, guys, hey, we gave zero tickets this past month. I know someone's gonna say, hey, Roy, just tell you guys don't have any tags. You know, we're there to keep everyone safe. And along in that idea of keeping everyone safe is to protect those that cannot protect themselves. Who I'm talking about are the kids, yeah? And more specifically, because I just became a grandpa. Thank you. More specifically, let's talk about car seats for children. And you know, back in the day, well, it makes me sound old when I say that, but back in the day, you just find a car seat for the kid inside, strap him down, and you're good to go, right? Well, you know, there's a little bit more than just doing that. You gotta find the right car seats, right? You have to have it installed correctly. And nowadays, you have to check that the car seat is still good, because just like with everything else, they issue recalls on them, yeah? So if you follow those basic steps, find the right car seat for your child, you know, because as they grow, you gotta get different seats. Install the car seat properly and keep checking whether or not there's a recall on the car seat. And I wanted to say that on September 15 to 21, NIZA, which is the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, is celebrating or honoring National Child Safety Seat Week. And if you are a brand-new grandparent just like me, you can come to the station, and Officer Kabante is one of our certified child safety seat installation professionals. So we can help you install the seat correctly and safely, so that you can keep your Kiki safe. And with that, I'd like to thank you very much, and I'll pass it like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Cap, just wanna say, thank you for having you guys, even going to the back roads, you know, swing by, because there's, you know, kids hanging out and stuff. So thank you, guys, again. All the back roads covering up Mahalo plenty. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Community of Nonsense. There's a bunch of them. And I will go through them rather quickly. So there's a lot going on this weekend across the district, starting in North Kohala on Saturday. There's a Ho'olalea known as Kapuna, honoring North Kohala grandparents at the Resilience Pub Barn from 12 to 6. Kahilo Theater presents John Kruse and Two Shows on Saturday, 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Queen Liliokalani's Birthday Celebration in Hilo is at the Liliokalani Gardens between 10 and 3. And still on Saturday in Waikoloa at the Stables, Saddles, Psalms, and Sunsets between 5 and 8. Another Narcan giveaway will take place at KTA September 14th. Appreciate that continues. Waimea Family Food Truck Friday, hosted by Captain, sponsored by Now Pocket Events, will be on Friday, September 20th this month between 4 and 8. Saturday, September 21st, will be the long anticipated return of the Paniolo Festival, Ho'olalea and Parade. The parade starts at 10:00 AM at Waimea Park, and the Ho'olalea starts at 11:30. This is the 72nd Annual. There's been a little respite, but they are back. We appreciate everybody who's been working on that. Thank you. White County Planning Department, their general plan engagement community meetings. I think there are down to just a few left. The one in Waimea will be at Ko'io Halei on September 23rd, and in North Kohala on October 1st. September 28th, the Kahilo Town Hall Civil Defense will host a disaster preparedness fair. Waimea Community Association and others will be on hand to support the efforts to keep us all better prepared. This sounded fun. Queens North White Community Hospital will participate and encourage all to join in the world's largest pet walk. Saturday, September 28th, beginning at 8:00 AM at the corner of Pukalani and Ala Okeha. You don't have to have a pet, but pets are to be unleashed. Discover Your Pulianna will hold an event called Eating Your Values on October 6th. October 12th is Waimea's Fault Festival at the District Park between 10 and 4. Also on October 12th is Kaua Okaaina. They're hosting Discover Your Heritage, a memorable day of discovery, connection, and storytelling, as they leverage technology to uncover and preserve family heritage. It's cool. 9 to 12 at Kani Campus. Excuse me. Just checking to see if the next one that I inserted is in the right place. No, it's not. Okay. So as we move toward the general election, which takes place on November 5th, we are reminded that voting is everyone's puliana, and please make sure that your vote is counted. You got the suicide prevention one? No. Maybe I forgot to say that. Let's see. With that in mind, Waimea Community Association is holding, go back one, please, our general election candidate forum on Thursday, October 17th at Kahilo Town Hall, between 5:30 and 7:30. We'll have the mayor's race, county council, District 9, and state house rev, District 8. We invite you to join us for that, to make an informed decision. And also, please save the date for our eighth annual Mahalo to First Responders. It's become a wonderful event in Kahilo, and an opportunity that we all enjoy to offer a special Mahalo to our first responders and share a meal together. Hope you can join us. All right. Sorry, Makela. I thought I inserted, September is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and there is more information up at the front, if you need resources for that. Yes?
Just the first responders, what date was that again?
It's Wednesday, November 13th.
Are they looking for volunteers?
Are we looking for volunteers?
Yes.
We have everyone, I think, lined up, but maybe. You interested? Do you like food?
My son's a first responder, so I gotta make sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I think I know how to get in touch with you. Because we do get food from local restaurants donated for the meal.
I got a fruit truck.
I know you did. All right, thank you.
We got you for tonight.
All right. Okay, so this is our last announcement, but I wanted to give you an update on the Ala Okeha Bench Project. Some of you may have heard about this over the last several years. Did I give you that, Leyland? No? Okay. So in just a little background, in 2020, the Blue Zones, North White Blue Zones, in partnership with PATH, sponsored the Ala Okeha Bench Project. Responding to a request by Kapuna to help community members to stay active and healthy by enjoying the outdoors, Ala Okeha was selected as the best walking path for this purpose. While walking offers great health benefits, Kapuna needed rest spots along the way. Installing benches along the route will operate a walk-rest-walk option for all of us. Working with White County, Parker Ranch, PATH, and many community members, 12 bench sponsorships enabled us to purchase benches for these rest spots. In 2022, 12 recycled plastic benches were ordered from Belson Outdoors and stored at Department of Public Works, Bayou Yar, and Waimea. The 12 sponsors are on the screen, but they're not. That's okay. Our sponsors are CAT, West White Concrete, Warren Lee, Waimea Seniors Club, Lee is here, Vet Associates, Queens North White, KTA But Two, HPA Canada France, and Alahuui Pa'ukamato, the Society of Hawaiian Women. So those are our 12 bench sponsors, and in order to sell the benches along Ala Okeha, we had to work with, at that time, Councilman Richards, with Parker Ranch and the county to transfer some easements. Anyway, long story short, in 2022, April 2022, trustees of Parker Ranch Land Trust confirmed that the installation of the benches did not constitute a violation of the ground of easement, while the process to dedicate Ala Okeha Road proceeds. So in October 22, the Attorney for County of Hawaii Department of Public Works approved a letter of agreement to accept the benches as part of the road improvements, and stipulated that the county would maintain and be liable for the benches under that easement agreement. In 2023, this group met with then-President James Houston with WCA, Senator Richards, and Blue Zones Representative Karen Tashima to discuss installation of the benches, and began to garner resources. So since then, this year, Clem Lam has drafted a design for the bench installation. Surveyor plane Ito, with the help of Brother Smith, has staked the locations of the 12 benches. You may see markers out there. And we've enlisted the efforts of John Roberts Construction and Lyle Lord Phyllis. They are going to volunteer and do all the work for the prep and the installation.
Yay.
We also have commitments from HPM and West White Concrete to provide all the materials needed for this walk. It's important to note that four of the 12 benches disappeared from the Bayou Yar between 2022 and 2024. Therefore, the Waimea Community Association is working with County Department of Public Works to secure county council District 1 contingency relief funds to purchase four additional benches to replace those missing. The resolution that will approve the funds for these benches will be heard by the county council on September 17th. If anyone is interested in supporting that or testifying, I think we should be okay, but... Then once that's agreed to, then we'll order those last four benches and then get the inverse and the funds. So in the meantime, we're making our plan for installation. That should be the first week or so into October, and we just wanted you to know about it. In case you see something going on, you'll know what that is. And we ask you to be cautious and patient in that area during an installation. Probably take a couple of weeks. Okay? And then when the forecome, we'll have to do those. But in any case, we hope to have that all done for the break. Yeah. All right. Moving right around. Thank you for indulging all of that. As you know, we spotlight a nonprofit every month, and we cast the basket and collect donations for the organization. So please be aware that the basket will come around as soon as the presentation is complete. Tonight, we'd like to support the efforts of St. James Church as they fundraised to build the gathering place, the building on their campus, where they did more efficiently provide our community meal. This weekly meal has been going on for years. It's amazing. With us tonight to tell us more is Terry Greenwald.
Assisting me is Gigi Cooper. She's holding up a couple of renderings. There are some more in the back. I know you can't see them from where you're at, so please stop by on your way out. So I'm here tonight to talk about a project that has been done as a dream and is now becoming a reality. St. James Episcopal Church has had a free weekly community meal every Thursday for almost eight years. We are building community one meal at a time. We have served, in eight years, over 210,825 meals. If any of you have either enjoyed the healthy home-cooked meals or sponsored meal, you know that we need in an open-air, three-sided pavilion that keeps us mostly out of the weather, but is rather dusty and at times a very chilly place to eat a meal and be sheltered. Although if everyone kind of scooches together, it gets kind of warm in there. Providing a meal costs about $1,500 per week, and there are usually two sponsors each week that share the cost. Several resorts each cook meals during the year to give our volunteer cooks a break. Other sponsors are individuals, businesses, and other faith-based entities. Our kitchen is currently in the church's parish hall, located about 70 feet away, and the cooked food is then transported using wagons or a golf cart to the pavilion for distribution. We have a weekly average of 30 volunteers who chop, cook, box up the delivered meals, set up the pavilion, and clean up. We serve between 500 and 600 meals every week. About half of those are delivered to shut-ins or to those living in senior housing, the houseless folks at Spencer Beach and to the Fly High area. And about 150 are eaten in the pavilion, with another 100 taken to go, to eat at home, or donated to the hospital emergency room staff or to fire police employees. We also serve as a food hub, because we share more of the generously donated food than we can use or store. Costco has been a blessing as our major donor, along with several local farmers who provide an abundance of fresh produce that is bagged and offered to those who attend the meal. Beneficiaries in Waimea include Kokua Ministries, the Wednesday Food Pantry, Iniola Church, Mana Christian Ohana, Kiawa Kahua Nui with luckily e-voyage canoe and a USDA canny master, Punama Leo Small World Preschool, Waimea Country School, New Hope Waimea, Hawaiian Homes, and the Waimea Fire Station. In Kohala, they include St. Augustine's Church, Tutu Ane, Kohala Baptist Church, and the Kohala Fire Station. In Waikoloa and Puakoa, the fire stations, the Waikoloa Community Church, and the Lions Club. Even posts along the Honaka Ho'angji, Honaka Salvation Army, St. Kalakas Church, Ma'apu'oi Ho'angji, the Baptist Church, and the Honaka and Ma'apu'oi Ho'ai Fire Stations. I'm sure there are others, but you get the idea. Several years ago, it became apparent that we were reaching our maximum for preparing and serving the meals. So a dream was brought about by several members who started a meal program. The gathering place was born. Initial plans began before COVID and sat idle for a while, and was picked up again a couple of years ago. We are planning on building a 5,000-square-foot space that will not only be home to a weekly community meal, but a meeting place that will benefit the entire Waimea and surrounding communities. The plans include a certified commercial kitchen with walk-in freezer and refrigeration space, a receiving area for deliveries, and a covered patron drop-off area. It will have accessible restrooms, space for a couple of small offices for church use, and an upstairs apartment for future church clergy or employees. Will also include state-of-the-art audiovisual equipment, a photovoltaic system with batteries, and a backup generator. In addition to the many ways the church will be using the building, plans are for the community to be able to use the building as a shelter where they can be fed in cases of disaster or emergency situation. We will, of course, continue to host all the various groups that currently use the facility, including the Full Gospel, Marshallese Church, AA, and NA groups. And as well, we're gonna fill the void that is short and missing for those that need a smaller place to have meals. Our goal is $5 million, and so far, we have pledges and donations from 161 supporters, totally a little over $3 million. We are now going out into the wider community to ask for your help in reaching our goal. If we reach our goal, we hope to break ground by mid-2025, and the projected completion will be the end of 2026, early 2027. I'm sorry, I have a stop sign. One, two more minutes, a second. The building is a church project, but it is being thought of as a building that will benefit and be utilized by the whole community. If you would like more information, there are brochures and a sheet in the back with church contact info, and how to donate online or mail a donation in. Mahalo for your support.
Very much. Awesome. All right. Now for the main portion of the meeting. We have some wonderful guests here tonight, and we thank you all for being here. Each will have an opportunity to provide information about their work in our community, and then we'll have time for questions in each case. Let me be clear that these are our guests. Waimea Community Association has always insisted on respect for all community members and our guests, and we may have varying opinions, but this is Waimea, and we all respect each other's opinions, and we will act in a tonal manner. Thank you for your light. So we're gonna start off with Interjects. We have Cassandra Macy. We call her Cassie. She's an advisor with the Government Relations for Interjects. Interjects is building Halei Huavehi, which is a solar farm on Parker Ranch lands out by the truck park. This project is meant to provide power for our community, and here is Cassie and, I'm sorry?
Sean.
Sean, to tell us more about that. Thanks, guys.
Thanks so much, Nancy. I want to thank you all for having us today and giving us the opportunity to speak with you and hopefully answer questions you might have about our project. But before, I'll give a brief interject introduction on Interjects, who we are as a company, and then an overview of our projects, and some drone footage of the project site now, and then we'll go into questions if you have them. But starting out, Interjects was founded in 1990, so we're nearing around 35 years in the renewable energy space. We're an international company that develops, owns, acquires, and operates solar, wind, hydroelectric, and battery energy storage across the United States, Canada, France, and Chile. At Interjects, we believe that, we believe in a better world where abundant renewable energy can create healthier communities and generate a shared prosperity in communities that we're working with. Our people, we're a passionate team of individuals who build or strive to build strong relationships and partnerships with our host communities. We believe that renewable energy is part of the solution to climate change, and we believe that we can generate value not just for our employees and shareholders, but to our partners and our host communities. And just more to scale, as you can see, or maybe not, because it's a little small, so I apologize. But across the four countries that we are working in, we have about 84 facilities in operation, which grossed about 4,100 megawatts. And of those 4,100 megawatts, about 1,200 are in the United States. We also have about 84 facilities under development, which will gross about 768 megawatts. And obviously, one of the projects under development we're here to talk about today is our Halei Huavehi Solar Project, which is located on Parker Ranch, nearing around Waimea's, spanning almost 300 acres. It's a 30-megawatt solar project with a 120-megawatt-hour battery energy storage system. And just for scale, 30 megawatts will generate nearly one-sixth of what is typical peak here on the big island of 180 megawatts. And 30 megawatts generates about, on average, 15,000 homes. And along with providing power, there will come long-term community benefits. Some of those project benefits will stream through local tax revenues, which, once in operation, will provide local tax revenues that benefit our schools, roads, and county services. Will also benefit through community partnerships, which we pride ourselves on establishing long-lasting relationships that will generate value in the community. And we will help the state of Hawaii meet their clean energy target, which is 100% clean energy by 2045. And now I will pass it to Sean to go- And now I will pass it to Sean to go over the typical stages of a solar project like ours.
Go through a couple steps here on the lifespan of a project. Interjects, sorry. Interjects does some investigating for getting land agreements prior to commencing construction. We then go into RFP stage, or Request For Proposal, with Helco. We were awarded, that brings us on to the next step, going through a lot of environmental studies and permitting processes. That does take quite some time prior to construction. Up to about a year and a half it took on Halekuavehi. So, once we secure all permits, we commence construction. Usually, it's the quickest portion of the lifetime of a project, but on this project, we did incur some delays after COVID with some supply chain issues. But we worked through it and commenced construction. And then we are planning to have a twenty-five-year PPA, so we will be operating the facility for the next twenty-five years. And then if PPA is not renewed, we will reclaim the land as we found it and take all the infrastructure out and put it back, like I said, as we found it.
Okay. And maybe while we answer some questions, we can show you some footage of the project. They have ten already?
Nope. Don't leave mine.
Good job.
No questions?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Hold on, let's wait so everybody can hear, please. I'll hold the mic.
So, all of this electricity that would be created by renewable sources will be channeled through Helco to us, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
With Helco threatening to cut off our electricity any time, are you going to be able to sell to the community?
We will not be able to. It will be controlled by Helco, but the positive thing with adding a renewable energy project is they will lower the brownouts that you see from Helco. It'll be more consistent with our battery system.
Who else has a question?
Have you guys calculated how much renewables would be required in addition to all the charging of the electric vehicles and all of that? What, what?
No, no calculation goes on a part of our designs. Again, it's a part of the, you have to get a PPA, a power purchase agreement, that caps us at the thirty megawatts and a hundred and twenty megawatt hours of batteries. So, our power is used by Helco as they see fit.
What is the lifespan of these solar panels? Like, how long are they good for? And then what happens when they are no longer good to use?
So, again, we have a twenty-five-year GPA, so all of our designs incorporate that lifetime. If it's deemed necessary to do like a module recycle, and we renew a PPA and replace them with a more up-to-date module after twenty-five years, we'll go through a recycling process.
So you can recycle those panels and reuse the same panels?
The silicon can be recyclable, all the materials in those modules, it's all recycled, yep.
Susan? What type of shared prosperity in your program that you had there? What type of shared prosperity will our community of Waimea be able to come up with?
Again, like, it does take into consideration, like, our project will be able to power most of the town and, again, reduce brownouts and a lot of the things that you're seeing currently right now.
We also have a question for the committee.
I wanted to know about the benefits, like roads and, just like how, how many things benefit from burning, from our products?
So, our project does have a lot of contingencies for fire. So our roads are twenty-foot wide, they're made of non-commodible aggregate, so it's virtually a fire break within the project. We also have a fire break on the outside perimeter of the project. So, to control any hazards, I think is a big positive item for the global area.
And then, and then also, because we will be paying taxes, those dollars will go straight to the county and hopefully be used to, you know, repair the roads and things that are needed at the schools and whatnot.
Cassie, can you speak to the community benefits without being too specific? Are you waiting for board approval or?
We're waiting. We've had some really good conversations with you, Nancy, and also Mike Hudson from Homesteaders Association. And once everything is sorted out and documents are signed and everything, we'll be able to come back here and share, but for now, not at the moment.
Just know that they're working on that significantly.
You got it. I'm going to say I'm very pleased with your site selection. Making an energy-generated infrastructure almost invisible is a neat trick. Congratulations on that.
How are we doing on time, Bonnie? You good?
You probably, and I'm sure, I mean, spoke to this earlier, but when will it be possible?
Currently, the schedule right now will be hitting COD around March of next year.
Thank you. I know we have good technology here, and I'm all for technology. I came from Kauai and I was wondering how to kill a kilowatt hour cost to the customer, yeah? In the near future, we will resee our rates, and I know you don't govern the rates, but we will see our rates stabilized as compared to KIC on Kauai. Or we'll see the kilowatt hour cost wise. I know we're not going to see it lower, but for all of us here as customers, paying customers, I basically look at the bottom line of what my kilowatt hour cost is per kilowatt. Thank you.
So loaded question there. We, again, the power we generate, it goes to Helco, and they can use it as they, you know, see fit, yep, so.
Well, that's the goal, I suppose, we're working for.
Correct, yes, yes. More efficient than, you know, any diesel facility requirement or anything.
Thank you. Excuse me, and not like KIC, their cost is, because it's a private group, private entity, KIC, a co-op actually, and so their cost is, we have, for kilowatt. Thank you.
Hi, I have a question about the, I guess, the purpose of the batteries. If I got your numbers right, it sounds like you've got four hours worth of battery backup. And that, you know, what's the, what's the purpose of that?
So, peak loads are at night when everybody goes home, right? And the sun is usually going down at that time, so the system would not be performing optimally. So the batteries will give you consistent power during those peak hours at sunset.
So they're not, so they're not meant to cover, say, a long period of foggy weather where the system isn't able to produce up to capacity?
I mean, the sun's out, the aridus would be low, but it would still be performing, but.
But it's, but it's lower capacity.
But it would be a lower capacity, but the batteries will keep, keep the power even throughout the.
But not for a long period of time.
Four hours, yep. When you have like, the design is for the peak hours at night when the sun is going down for, to make sure that we can supplement Helco.
Do you have any plans to increase the battery capacity over time?
We do in, after five or ten years, we're going to do some studies on the batteries and see how degraded they are. Our pads have been lengthened longer than our current battery footprints, and we will be putting additional batteries in if the degradation tells us.
Okay, we have two more questions here.
Thank you for your attention. Quick questions. Where are the panels being sourced? And is your technology provided for increasing the efficiency of the conversion of the power?
They're sourced out of Thailand, that V-Sun is the brand. And they do not go up in efficiency during the life of a module. They actually lose efficiencies, but our designs include that degradation, so we can have continuous power as required.
Okay. I've got a few questions. My first one, are you folks the ones doing the project going down like Kohala, so, or is that a different?
Nope.
That's different. Okay, my question is, do you ever do these projects where you're not using that much land, but instead you're able to install the solar panels on existing buildings or parking lots or people's homes instead of prime land that we have, whether it be for ranching or anything else? Just a general question. And then I also wanted to know, you said that you would leave the land as you found it. Is that signed in the contract? I'm just wondering.
It is. If the, if the PPA is not renewed, it'll, it's in the agreement, and we have a recommendation plan already in place.
Okay.
Say the first part of your question again.
The first part was just if you ever do these projects.
Yes, yes.
Over existing.
We have done.
Instead of prime land that we have there.
We have done projects similar to what you see at the airport, airport style, but our multi, the size systems that we like to do are multiple megawatts that, you know, parking lots are usually not the size that we'd be looking for. But one thing about efficiency with our design is, with single-axis trackers, it's one-third less land needed to create the same power of a fixed tilt system. So that's why we chose to do a single-axis tracker to reduce the footprint as much as we could.
We're going to do one more question here from Toulai.
On V-Sun, you're collaborating materials in sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty homes. Potentially, this will impact, do you, as a part of Helco, have the capacity to determine right now as a primary site to be able to support the community with this energy? And then my second part of the question is, I also noticed in those collateral materials that you mentioned are key to the community. And so, my first question, as far as that question, is, is this your first time presenting to us as a community? And if it is, how often are you skilled to come back to us and we can continue to have this conversation? Since they came to us when they started, and they're here midway, and then they'll probably come back at the end. First step, that goes.
And then as far as the power going directly to Waimea, it's definitely up to Helco how they use it, but Waimea is going to be a big user of this power, so.
And just, just to answer the second part of your question, as Nancy says, we're really in the early stages, but the project's lifespan will be about twenty-five years, and we plan to be partners with the community for that duration of time. And so, we'll be back for more questions and hopefully to answer any more or concerns you might have or ideas that you might have that can improve our project. All right, I think that was our time. I want to thank you all so much for having us. Thank you so much. Thanks for the laughter, we have got to try and win, and it was glorious hearing from you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Hawaiian Electric here to update us on their power shut-off program as it relates to keeping us all safe during certain weather conditions that could result in fire episodes. Here with us is Jennifer Zalco Schluter, Director of Government Affairs, and Kevin Walton, Director for Hawaii Island.
Aloha and good evening. I do have to tell you guys, about a week ago, we hosted a resilience fair in Kona. I'm afraid to have a crowd like this, and we didn't get it. And it was awesome to see everybody here, and I know there are folks online as well. But, again, good evening. Thank you to Nancy and the Waimea Community Association for giving us space on the agenda to come and talk about what Hawaiian Electric is doing to keep communities safe, because that's number one. And my name is Jennifer Zalco. I'm the Director of Government and Community Relations for Hawaiian Electric here on Hawaii Island.
And I'm Kevin Walton, Director of Waimea.
So I'm going to go through my slides very quickly. Can you go to the next one? And then I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. But wildfires are among the extreme weather events that are increasing, and not just in the state of Hawaii, but nationally in Ruru. And since 2019, Hawaiian Electric has been working on our wildfire mitigation strategies. And this work is being done with our county and state emergency management officials and communities. We've been working very closely with both. Our wildfire safety strategy has three phases. I'm going to go through them really quickly. And part of that does include, and a gentleman earlier, his name, mentioned it, the public safety power shut-off that Karen and Will will talk about. Next slide. So as part of the first phase, we've already implemented these things that you see on the slide. So one of the first things we did in last year was we actually send spotters to strategic locations during certain weather events. Red flag warnings would be one of them. And these spotters are looking for hazardous conditions. If they see something, they can call it in right away. And that helps first responders and us actually get to the situation very quickly. The other thing we've done is we've also reprogrammed our sensors and our protective devices. These are things on the grid. And what happens is, if it feels a disruption, you know, a tree branch on the line, a metallic aluminum on the line, it'll shut off power very quickly in these higher wildfire risk areas. And the other thing we're doing in the high wildfire risk areas is what's called block reclose, which means the grid is designed, and the way we've had our devices designed, it feels a disruption, but maybe the disruption goes away. The tree branch falls in the line, it falls down. The way it would work in the past is our system would actually attempt to reclose itself, to fix itself. So you would have seen a little bump in the light, maybe six seconds, it would have come back on. In the high wildfire risk areas, we have blocked the ability for the grid to just reclose itself until we can send a trouble inspector there to just inspect and make sure everything is okay before we re-energize those lines. And those are both safety measures. Now, what does this mean to you? What does it mean to the community or the customer? You may have, and you may have seen already, more frequent outages and longer duration. Because again, until we can go and actually inspect that line, we don't see any problem, there are no lines on the ground, we won't be able to re-energize. And those are both safety measures. Next slide. The second phase are actions that are underway, or will be soon underway, in things such as installing cameras and weather stations in strategic areas around the island, replacing wood poles, with stronger poles, or in certain areas, steel poles. Using fault indicators that quickly identify the location of faults, and that helps us get there quicker, and that helps us restore faster. And the other thing is expanding our inspection of our closing infrastructure. We also are continuing work on our hundred-nine-million-dollar grid harmony work. And half of those funds are being paid for by the federal government. This isn't just about wildfires, it's about tsunamis, and it's about hurricanes, and the other things that we face living in the island. Next slide. And the last phase, and these are the longer-term action plans that you see on this slide, additional weather technology with higher sensitivity to help us make forecasting a little more accurate. And undergrounding infrastructure in certain strategic locations where we have the highest wildfire risk areas. Expanding the use of covered conductors, expanding hazard tree removal vegetation management, working with our fire departments on strategy, and then seeking more federal permitting opportunities. Because we do understand that, you know, any impact to customers, we are very sensitive to that. So that's something. So that's something that we're really looking at. For more information, we do have all of this on our website. If we don't mention it later, because we don't have a lot of time tonight, there are a lot of brochures out there with information about how you prepare your home, your businesses for any disaster. And then with that, I will turn it over to Kevin.
Excellent. Thank you. So I got the slide on public safety power shut-off, we call it P S P S. Acronyms for me makes it hard because there's so many acronyms. Basically, this is our last line of defense. When we look at a situation where there is potential for fire and there is risk to community, we stand up our incident management team and they come in and they look at each point to say, do we shut off the circuit or not? Because we want to protect our community, we want to protect people. So started on July 1st, didn't mean that we was gonna start the first outage on July 1st. It's just the season started on July 1st. So we had to be prepared to enact a power shut-off if it was necessary. This third bullet is it's based on National Weather Service information. It's based on the weather. Like any other condition, if you got hazardous weather, fire weather conditions, it triggers us to stand up and be prepared to implement this last line of defense. Next slide. When we look at it, we actually hired a third-party consultant to go through and look at the different areas of where fire risk areas was. And they identified the areas and laid it out on a map and we kind of focused, we focused our efforts. Because you can look at this island at four thousand square miles and you can be everywhere. But they looked at where the most risk was, where fires was most prominent due to history, weather, those kind of conditions. And then they provided and said, look at this. From there, we set this up and we started to notify and get the information out. Online, we have an address there, hawaiinelectric.com/pspsmaps. You just can actually go there on the site and you can actually put in your address to see where and if you fall into those zones. Next slide, please. This slide, which is a real busy slide, is basically what happens before, during, and after a public safety shut-off. It's important because it kind of lays out start, during, what's happening, when we put back, and when it's over. I'm gonna try to describe a little bit better in this next slide. Next slide, please. So again, we depend on fire weather products, right? National Weather Service comes back and says, you're in a red flag warning condition or you're in a fire weather watch condition. In other words, there's a condition that exists that can perpetuate or make wildfires worse. That makes us stand up what we call an incident management team. When we stand up that incident management team, we have key groups that stand up within it to focus on helping us to make the determination, make sound decisions. So first thing they look at, right, is this persistent drought condition? That is this index that triggers the red flag warning. You get these conditions? Sorry. Sorry for wait, guys. The second part, which is wind gusts forty-five miles per hour and higher. Once we're in a red flag condition, in other words, they have these conditions where wildfire can spread quickly. If our circuits where we put weather stations, Jen kind of talked about it, we put these weather stations on these circuits. If we see these kind of gusts and we have these spotters there that says, hey, these conditions are really bad here, they feed that back to the central group and then they come back and say, yeah, we need to shut it off, make the decision, turn off the circuit. This last one, which is relative humidity below forty-five percent, that one there, we measuring that exact weather conditions at those different circuits. So this helps us to determine how dry it is in that area. Last thing to note, and they put this in the notes on the bottom, National Weather Service red flag warning does not automatically trigger P S P S. Though we have a P S P S trigger, we stand up our I N T. That doesn't mean I'm gonna turn off the circuit. It just means that that gives us a sign, trigger, to get ready so that that way we can let you guys know, we gotta get ready. Because this is what we're gonna do on our last line. Just to note, five of the past ten years, red flag warnings have been issued and wind gusts above forty-fives are rare in most areas in summer months. Just notes, but again, in this last storm, and I'm just gonna use this as a point to put this in because I'm gonna have to jump through the slides pretty quick. During Kona, going into the event, going into the storm, it was said it was gonna be a very wet storm, right? Very wet. So they weren't thinking any fire weather watches, fire weather red flags were gonna be stood up. As they watched the storm come in, the dew point was so low that it, they had to issue it because they were gonna get into that situation. So they issued the red flag. We stood up the I N T, we notified, we didn't have to institute a power shut-off. But we went through the process and made sure that we was ready for it. So I want to make sure you guys understand, we do have a process, we do take this seriously. Next slide.
Do you think you can run through these places because we're in our five-minute questions time right now?
Okay. Extreme fire weather subsides to safe levels, we will put it back on. These are the guidelines that we use. Time for crews to patrol, we need them to patrol, so it takes along to make sure it's good. And then possible repairs to re-equipment while power was out. Next slide. In is the emergency preparedness. Use this book, it helps to set up for any type of emergencies, including P S P S. Because the outages could last three days. So use this kind of stuff to help. Next slide. And then the last one, medical need. I take this seriously. If you have medical needs, please fill this out. Get this in so that we know. And then next slide. And then again, thank you for allowing me to come speak to you folks on this. And I'm willing to answer any questions. And if I run out of time on questions, you can come ask me questions after and I'll stay as long as I have to stay to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, can we get a start right here?
I'm a wildfire safety advocate, Mark Lauda. I know that the P S P S program isn't especially popular, but I guess there's a lot of people in the Hina that wish it was adapted before me. So I personally am appreciative of it and I understand that something needs to be done. I saw in that long-term planning part, the conversation about undergrounding the lines. How much of that gone into so far? And very specifically in the village, we've got about three and a half miles of above-ground lines right next to it. How much would that cost to put under the ground and who do I gotta call to start getting that money for?
Okay, so that's a good question. Because undergrounding is always, you know, even us as the utility people like underground because it removes the above ground. There's complications with underground as well. Underground is very expensive. On a normal basis, anything that costs over it, what it costs us to go over it, it should be about six times. So when you ask me what it would cost to go underground, it depends on how much you're talking about to underground. And whatever that overhead would have cost us, multiply that by six and you probably get a whole bunch of that.
Okay.
So, what'd you guys think?
Walton.
My name, how many of you, you familiar? I wanna, I wanna give a big mahalo for all the team, all your team who was out there. Because my power was on. But Kona, I, my entity was out fifteen hours. So. I need, I need to know why we, we, we spending money that pays my profits as well. I need the money that you guys can raise to fix this problem. Because that's what we're in pain for. Okay? And then. And then, I need you guys to give those boys and girls bonuses. Because they keep our light on and they save our kuna's life. You know, we, we need to take care of them. We gotta provide for them.
Yeah, ask the question.
What was questioned?
I heard what you need. I, I don't know how to answer your question, but I can tell you this. I really appreciate the line crew's efforts. You know, they work through the rain. I know them all personally. They're very good people. They're your community, they're members, they know you folks, they respect you guys and they care about you guys. That is wholeheartedly speaking from your side.
Okay, thank you. And he hasn't asked yet, so instead of you, I'm going ahead with our last question for now. You mentioned Kona and you only talked about the rain fog, but the wind was treacherous. That's my comment.
I agree, the wind was treacherous. But when National Weather Service is speaking about it, it's spoken about the rain. So that's why they didn't initially issue a red flag warning. Otherwise, if they said that this is gonna be a possible red flag event, you might have started, right? But it was, the wind was treacherous. I agree with you. And go back to his comment about the guys out in the field. They was out in there through that full time, trying to make sure that we could keep people back on. So I appreciate the comment, I appreciate the statement. And I will tell them your folks' appreciation. They need bonuses.
Right, guys? Go.
Can we give back to the original question on why were we taxing taxpayers money instead of helping profits and whatnot?
So it's.
Last answer, please.
So that question is a little bit different because we're going for federal grants and federal funds so that we don't have to impact customer rates. We are paying money to pay for other things. But what Janet talked about was a grant that is granted through federal government for these type of infrastructure. And so to benefit everybody, it's always better to use federal funds. So we're not using the county funds, we're using federal funds coming from, or state funds, we're using federal.
Because I'm just talking about the executives that we give bonuses. They got bonuses. They never fix the problem. Okay, that's what I'm talking about. Executives, they will get money that's supposed to fix the problem. But they never. That's why we get that problem on Lina.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, you guys. Thanks, Jim. Thanks for being here tonight. Next on our agenda is Hawaii Island Community Development Corporation. Keith Cotto is the Executive Director and he's here with us tonight. H I C D C is here to get community input on the proposed fourteen-acre portion of the site donated by Mark and Lynn Benioff for the purpose of developing housing within reach of working families. To date, H I C D C has worked with self-help builders to construct more than four hundred homes on the Big Island and developed several rental projects with four hundred and twenty-three units for low-income seniors. H I C D C is nearing completion on a, excuse me, hundred-unit family rental project in Kona and is currently developing twenty more self-help homes in Kona. We're grateful to have the expertise of Keith and his team working on this Waimea project. And please tell us more.
Thank you, Nancy. This is a much bigger crowd than I expected. It's nice to see all of you, all of you coming. Before we, I would like to introduce a couple of our board members who have come tonight. Roger Harris, who's just recently joined our board. And Ross Wilson, who's right there in the corner behind the palm. Staff members of it, we're gonna include Jeremy McCumber. Jeremy is the Chief of Operations. He oversees a lot of what we do and in particular, self-help housing program. Sorry about that. And in the back, Eric Ishimura, he's a Developing Manager. He's been overseeing the pro-royal rental project that is nearing completion. As Nancy said, you know, we are a Hawaii County Community Development Corporation. We're a five oh one C three corporation. That basically has been doing two programs, self-help housing and senior rentals. Can you shoot the next slide, please? Yeah, so this is a picture of our Ouli project, which we did about twenty-five years ago. And next slide. And this is the Waimea Senior Housing Project, which is right behind Minute Stop. Next slide. I know it's hard to read, but H I C D C has been developing self-help projects and senior rentals for a number of years. So right in here is when we did the Ouli projects nineteen ninety-nine to about two thousand and four. But since then, we've been doing other projects out there. Let's see, we've been in Kauai, Kanaeva, Kohala, Keokahua, Kona, Kekeo. And as far as the rental projects, we've done, it's actually four now, in Kaoru, Kohala, Wailea, Papua, Keahua, and Hilo. Altogether, we've done more than four hundred self-help homes and more than five hundred rental units. And currently, we have a hundred eighty-five more units that are in some stages of development. Next slide, please. So we, we don't, we received this donation from the Benioff family. This property is, it's actually shown here, it's bounded by Kauai Road, one branch of the Waikoloa Street. Everything below on a corner and then down toward the Long Rock Wall that runs from Kauai Road down towards Waikoloa. Below us is the Ouli Farms project, which is another project that we're not involved with. So this is the entire holdings here now. What we. What we planted, next slide, please, is develop this portion here. This is a fourteen-point-three-acre portion. And we basically are looking at the site as, as you can tell, there's a lot of up and down on this site. So to avoid you just having to do a lot of mass trading, we're placing the houses and any of the related uses on the more gently sloping portions of the property. Next slide, please. Next slide. Yeah, so the subdivision plan basically, these are lots, minimum lot sizes, ten thousand square feet. As you can see, this is the more gently, you know, sloping portion. These are steep areas, so we're trying to stay out of there. Next slide. We first, you know, encountered this area with, we acquired this eleven-acre piece from the county, you know, back in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe it was. And we developed that forty-acre, forty-lot sort of subdivision. And, you know, this was a self-help project that went in four increments. And today, you know, the majority of these lots are still owned by the self-help builders. Next slide, please. Yeah, so just to give you an idea of what kind of people are, you know, get to be involved with this. Sorry. Anyway, we have, you know, elementary school cafeteria workers, receptionists at a CPA firm, oncology medical assistant, case manager, dental assistant, forklift operator, auto detailer, janitor, you know, insurance account, cashier at the grocery store, mechanical technician, the telescope, office clerk at the public high school, and operating unit. Now, these are like everyday people you encounter. They are really the, the part of the community that is our central, you know, to the function of the community. And, but on the other hand, the part. And, but on the other hand, the part of the community that finds it difficult to afford to own a home. So that's what, you know, this program comes in. Next picture, next slide. The people, you know, that were in the first Ouli project were like at East Hardware, Starbucks, KTA. I think if you go down there, you'll probably recognize a lot of the people just because they are around and we see them all the time. The next slide, please. So what happens is the families work together and it's a lot of work. And it becomes, that's the kind of people that gravitate toward this program. You know, they are willing to do the work. Next slide. It's not easy work, you know, that they have to do every weekend, probably for 10 months, to get all of those houses built. They work Saturday, Sunday, basically, you know, sun is on. Next slide, please. But, you know, they do it because it's their opportunity. Next slide. Okay, so this is a site showing you what the property looks like. Next slide. We did an archaeological survey. What they found was there were some temporary occupation sites along the river. A burial down at the lower sections there, there were petroglyphs, again at the lower sections, and this long rock wall. So these latter three items are going to be preserved. We've worked with the State Historic Preservation Office on that. And, but what we're doing now is nowhere close to, you know, those sites. The next slide, please. The entire property was surveyed by the contractor for the Army Corps of Engineers and we did not plan any unexplored ordinance on the site. Next slide. Right now, we have enough water for 43 lots. Actually, we have a capability to think about another 10. But, you know, right now, we're doing 43. We're going to need more water in the future, you know, to develop more houses. Next slide. The, you know, subdivision itself, you know, as we go through it, we're going to have parks, you know, recreational facilities, and then sewer system plant. Next slide, please. But really, it's, in the end, it's going to be owned by the homeowner association, which in truth are these people. It's the homeowners and the homeowners association, and they're going to be responsible for the property. Next slide. So what we're targeting is income groups of 80% of their median income and 50%, which is right now for family for $88,500, $55,500. We'd like to be able to, you know, help those above 80% because even at that, it's not that easy to buy a house in this, in this community. Next slide, please. In order for us to do that, you know, we're going to need, you know, we're going to need methods to get the cost down. One of them is, you know, this donation that we have right here. This was a, you know, major gift to, to the effort from the Benioff family. Next slide, please. Sport equity, you know, the families do all the carpentry, they do all the painting, they install the cabinets, they do flooring, roofing. It's tremendous amount of costs that are saved by doing it yourself. Next slide, please. And the third element is getting favorable financing. USDA loans, grant sources, and other lending sources that they go through. Next slide, please. So right now, we're in for rezoning and it's going up through the planning process. And, next slide. So we hope that we can get the families on the site, you know, late 2025. We have to go through the process of zoning as well as subdivision. Next slide, please. So if you know people who are interested, they should go to the website, hicdc.org. And next slide, please. And there you'll find, you know, this website and it'll tell you what the steps are to become mortgage-ready and eligible for self-help housing. Next slide. So that's it, you know, this is, this is what we're trying to achieve. And anyway, that's our program. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So who will be eligible for this? Will people from the mainland be able to move over and apply for this? Or only people in this community or surrounding communities?
Well, okay, so this is a federally funded project. And so, you know, we cannot basically say you cannot apply to show the name. But what we have found is basically because you're doing self-help, it is, you need to be present. And, you know, that's why we kind of like to get the word out to the local community so that they, the local people, can get a, you know, basically a head start in doing it. Actually, today, you know, we've done 400 homes. I don't think we've had anybody from the neighborhood. They kind of, if you recall what that last slide looked like, that's basically our clients.
And Keith, isn't one of the things that's different, over here. One of the things that's different about this is that the land is essentially free, right? So in other projects, was the land donated as well? Or the land cost played into the cost of the home?
No, yeah, this is the first time that the land is actually donated. But we have had support from nonprofits before.
So this is two... Thank you. Julie?
Nancy, that was my question. But anyways. What, so what I was going to ask was, the cost of the homeowner, will the build include the value of the land? So it's not going to be the value of the land, it'll just be to build the home. Will there be a commi buyback feature? Because I know when the first Ouli was built, the homeowners there had a commi buyback. So they paid, they refinanced the home, the interest rates dropped, and they refinanced the home. There was a, there was a feature in there where they had to, there was a commi buyback and they had to pay that back to the county. And then I do know, like on Kuaulu, Waikoloa, there's an equity clause in it. So because you're getting your home for $200,000, a three-bedroom home, if someone wants to turn around and sell it for more, there's an equity feature that is given back. Would that be given back to the county? Does that go back to you or is that feature even included in this? Thank you.
They're really frustrated about that Ouli one, you know, the first one. You know, the reason that the buyback and that we came into the county was basically to compensate the county for the land, because the county took the land. But we will have, we have like a buyback provision and there'll be a shared equity, you know, provision because you're getting a subsidy to begin with. And, you know, we, we like to keep the program, the houses as affordable as possible for as long as possible.
Do you have to keep them for certain amount of time?
Well, there's a buyback provision. So, you know, if you need to sell the next year, you can. But there's a formula for what the price is to be able to get for it.
Who benefits from the buyback?
County or your organization?
So the organization would benefit in that any proceeds that are garnished from the project. The, the simple math of it is we're trying to revolve the resources from the project to continue to build out the project. So this particular project does not currently have any county money, so there would be no money going back to the county. And then I kind of wanted to back up to the question about the land and because it was given for free, so, because I know that's going to be a misconception out there, that because the land was given to our organization for free, that that means that you can, we can give it to everybody else for free. But the reality is there's the cost of infrastructure. As Keith mentioned, there's limited water. So we have to, if we cannot get more water, we have to develop a water source and then all of the interior infrastructure to the project and then tying that out to, you know, the mainstream infrastructure. So those are all real costs. So there will be land cost improvements in some form or another that are incurred by the buyers.
Okay, next question?
Uh, no, how to for that, okay. Uh, let me see, let me see. Number one, I'm not too smart about a lot of these things, so let me apologize for that. Uh, number two, I want to share some things that are maybe what we heard or rumors or some community, like misinterpretations of what's going on. Because I'm really concerned about the cost of our living. I have adult, I have adult, young adult children and...
I need to make sure that we are thriving first before we continue to build and add in. I want to add, I want my kids to live in this community. I want them to thrive, but I want expense. And 25 years, even for the socialized, I saw my grandchildren, I count in seven generations. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, maybe I can address some of that. You know, I know that there was a discussion about a park in that area. And that was really by the prior landowner. You know, we bought the property from the county. But prior landowner had a project that we were going to do, Gulf Forest, presented for community, and they proposed the park. You know, but it was never part of our plan. We bought eliminators to do the houses and that's what we did. You know, as far as the fire station, that property was leased. I think it's leased to the fire department and that was leased by the prior owner. And so that, you know, that's why you have the volunteer fire station there. And I think it's quite a benefit, you know, through the existing Ouli self-help place as well as, you know, our future homes. And in terms of water, you know, we, we recognize that water is a mission and we are basically trying to work with the water target to see what can be done. You know, to develop more dependable water source. And so we can basically put more homes out there.
Thank you, Keith. Lottie, how much time do we have on questions?
A minute and a half.
Minute and a half. Okay, we got two left.
I got a question. Um, so an annual Ouli, does that come as a requirement for our bigger, uh, strength, bigger development? Because it was only, you didn't use a credit for the, the Benioffs, when, um, only that end. Does that mean that it fulfills a requirement for our bigger development?
Yeah, the short answer is no. You know, the property was given to us, there was no expectation of receiving housing credits. You know, I, I met with Mark and Lynn once and they were basically clear that, um... You know, they're just trying to help.
So, so a roundabout answer to your question. So we're actually charged by our charter, our nonprofit. We only serve low-income towns. See, they kind of benefit in doing that, other than the ability to continue to be able to do that.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can get to the slide which shows the map. I'm interested in...
We don't have time, Anthony, sorry.
I'm interested in being concerned about the point, the point of access to the project from Kauai High Road. What I see initially is an access to happen, it's like that.
It comes off of Waikula.
Yeah.
That side street that goes to the other self-help.
So right now, the access to the, well, it's here on Kauai Road and it actually runs, I guess I shouldn't touch the screen. Yeah, so it runs up here and then on the other side is a, is a private road, so this is blocked off. So we will use the same access point here. We're not going to try and, you know, take access off any of these, this difficult areas.
There's a sign there right inside, so I, I was just going, anyway, that's the point.
Thank you. I think that's all we have time for. I'm so sorry that we're, we're running out, but this is really good content. Laura, maybe you can send a question along. If anybody has more questions, just send them along to me or to Keith and we'll make sure they get answered. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Last, but certainly not least, how's our time? We're supposed to be powered, but we're not. We welcome our state DOT director, Ed Snepin, to OneMia. He's been director of DOT the last two years, was deputy for Waikoloa Division prior to that. Thank you for being here tonight. I know you're a really busy guy. Mr. Snepin oversees airport, parks, highways, and support services for those. I just had to brag about you a little bit. Something that you may not be aware of, Ed recently spearheaded the governor's directive and built houses in the highlands. You wouldn't think that the DOT director would be building houses, but Ed is... Ed's a guy who gets things done. And so the governor tapped him to do this and he did. So maybe he'll speak to that a little bit. Though we appreciate you being here and you started coming here.
Hello, Mike Cotto. Hello, hi, everybody.
Hello.
Thanks so much for having me out tonight. Put together like 10 slides, just the initiatives that you're running in your community. I didn't know exactly what you guys wanted to see, but I figured you want to ask a little bit of questions afterwards. So we're going to go through this pretty quickly. Next slide, please. First project that we're looking at right now is the Daddy Kane Noe Extension. Senator Inouye did an amazing job of getting us funding for, for the saddle road redevelopment that we have right now. His commitment to us, though, was just to up a road and he fulfilled that commitment. Now, we're trying to make sure that we can extend this down to Kuaikao Mungu Highway. We don't have $140 million for this. But the, but the Army can help us out. So we've worked with Colonel McGonagall and he's committed to pushing forward on the DAR funding for about $50 million bucks. That's going to help tremendously in spending and bringing this cost down for this project and actually making it a reality to move forward. Their process is about five years with DAR funding, so they're running it through right now. I was just up in the Pentagon with them two weeks ago and the, the process is moving. So it's not just, just talk from them, they're moving it forward. So we're going to move forward on our environmental processes in the same time. Right now, we have, I apologize, it's kind of small. So, but, but we posted, we always post our presentations on our websites. If you go to h.voy.gov, go to, go down to the community presentations, you can take a look at them. So you don't have to worry about taking notes anywhere. But for this, so we're going to be pushing our environmental processes. Rep. Tarnas and Senator Richards have gotten us funding to make sure we can finish up the environmental, move this all forward so that we can start setting up our design revision for 2029. We can move it forward when the funding comes through. We haven't set the preferred alternative, but in general, everybody's kind of weighed in on where it should be, that Kiss Route is the one that is being looked upon as the... that Kiss Route is the one that is being looked upon as the preferred right now. So we'll finish up the environmental, everybody can weigh in on that, then we can move this forward. The more support you get in the environmental, faster things can go. So, once we point it out there, we'd love for everybody to weigh in on it. Next slide, please. Corner Runway Project. So this one, we reconstructed the whole 11,000 foot of feet of runway. Uh, we had a couple issues out there. Uh, they shut down the runway for a couple times. I, I tell you, FAA and our staff went out there the day before. That crack was two inches. The next day it was three and a half feet. Amazing, I mean absolutely amazing on, on the way progress. So we shut it down immediately after that. I apologize if anybody got stuck there, uh, but we had to get it done. Um, we're gonna be reconstructing everything. Now, so right now, we're doing some pre-construction work and everything ready. In October, we're gonna shut down the runway completely at night, from, I think, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So we can construct the 3,000 feet in the middle. Um, the standard for airlines to operate is 6,600 feet of runway. Uh, we cannot give that to them when we do work in the middle. So at nighttime, we'll shut it down. We've been working with all of our freight carriers who fly at night, and our airlines who fly at night, to make sure that, um, they can adjust during the schedule. That October timeframe is gonna be the middle, the middle 3,000 feet. After that, we do the ends, and when we do the ends, we'll always have 7,000 feet for them, in the daytime and the nighttime. So we won't have a complete shutdown anymore. Only two airlines have come back and said they have concerns. Um, one was United, they're gonna stop some of their later, um, later flights, but they'll up, upgrade their earlier flights to ensure that they keep that same number of seats coming out of it. JAL is another one. They're, because Japanese standard is 8,000 feet. We're trying to see how we accommodate them, so they don't shut down for a whole month. But we'll, we'll get back to your community association, association leaders with updates on those, if there's any impacts. Um, we're looking at this project going by 18 months, but we're trying to minimize all the impacts to everybody. Next slide, please. Kauai High. Um, this is a project where we got about 20 million, 25 million from the federal government in additional funding to do this project. We competed with other states for this funding. Uh, the project is gonna widen Kauai High Road in front of the harbor, make sure we get turning, so you don't get stuck behind a lot of trucks in that area. Uh, we're gonna be covering over that covert area to make sure we can widen over there. We're also gonna be replacing a lot of AC in that area with hardened decks, so we can expand the hardened, uh, laydown areas, make it a lot more efficient for our shippers. Uh, we'll increase the, our mass lighting, make it safer for everybody. And we're gonna be relocating one of our offices that always get flooded, to make sure we pull it out of the flood zone. About 32 million total, about 70% of that came from the feds. It funded that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise. Next slide, please. Repaving in different areas. We're trying to make sure that your system, um, looks and operates as, as good as possible. In two areas along Mauna La Hua, it's horrible. Um, thing one is Pololo Road in that area is really bad, so it's gonna get resurfaced. Um, and the other area is gonna be kind of by, by the eucalyptus, right, probably, in that area, out there. So those two portions, um, I gotta, I gotta say, the Pololo Road area, it used to be county road that we took from them. Um, we just got criticized all the time because we own most of Mauna La Hua, and portion was crappy. No offense, nerd, but it was crappy. We, we took it back to make sure we could take it and, and we can make it consistent throughout. And the other portion, that was our fault, we just never done. So we're gonna repave those. Uh, the contractors are coming available in the next two weeks or month. So we'll be starting about that timeframe. It takes about three months to get this done. Next slide, please. So what, the multimodal improvements project that's coming into Waimea town. So this is gonna be a roundabout with bike and pedestrians throughout that route. Part of the discussion is, we, we did a tell, or a study, a community study, and they looked at the Waimea improvements or safety improvements route, considered different routes. One of them was the mini bypass, that was like 60 million bucks at the time. Um, and, but this was one of the improvements that we looked at, that we could, we could effectively, um, afford, you know, to move forward very quickly. This roundabout is gonna give us a lot more capacity through that intersection. Um, right now, as a stop condition, it's not as efficient. With roundabouts, a lot more efficient. The roundabout is also a lot safer when we go through this area. When we designed these roundabouts, we were designing it for WB67s. That's bigger than the trucks that we normally allow on the roads here at WB50s. So we're conservatives. This roundabout's gonna be about 125 feet diameter, a lot bigger than the ones that are in, in Puna right now. This project is about 50 million bucks. It's going through its design now. We don't have the schedule for this to go, to go out yet, but as soon as we get it, we'll send it out to the community. Next slide, please. Kind of related, Waika Bridge. I think we've been working on this for the last 30 years. So it's finally gonna come out this December. It's gonna go out to bid. In general, it takes about six months. So once we bid it out, six months, uh, it takes for us to award it to a contractor. This project is two years and a couple of months that are for construction. Um, this project is also gonna be building a roundabout in that intersection area. It's gonna clean things up part of it over here. We've gone through this environmental process for this project like four times. Two times we got two, two more times we just couldn't come to a conclusion. We're finally in that point now that we can afford the, the improvements that are in this area, to improve the bridge, improve the intersection, to make sure we can move this project forward. Okay? So bidding it about, about, um, end of the year, we're looking at about June of next year to start the construction process. We'll have a, a meeting with the community before we start construction to make sure that we talk about the impacts in there. Next slide, please. This one is just an application right now. So we're working with DLR. We're trying to see how we can improve biking pedestrian access throughout all of the state. In this area, there's, there's lands that DLR owns and that we own, that we could potentially set up a shared path off of the roadways. Make sure that bicyclists and pedestrians don't have to go anywhere near our routes. They can be in safer areas to enjoy the view, to enjoy the, um, the trip, without looking at any impacts from, from vehicles. It's gonna help everybody, uh, from a efficiency perspective and safety. This one, we're looking at about 2 million bucks in, um, in funding from the federal government, just to push forward on the planning. The project itself, we're looking at about 50 to 60 million bucks. The good thing is, though, once we get a planning grant from the feds, in general, they're invested. So they're looking at trying to give us more money for the, for the project itself when we implement.
Yeah, the second, Kohala, sorry.
This one, yeah, Kohala area. Uh, next slide, please. Our NEVI project, the, the feds in this last, um, grounds, Surface Transportation Bill, provided for, um, an EV funding, um, mechanism. So they provided about 2.5 million per year, um, to Hawaii, uh, through this bill. That's in addition to what we normally would have gotten, um, to require us to put in about 13 charging station locations throughout the state. There's gonna be five on the, on the Big Island. Two are gonna be on the west, west Hawaii side. These charging stations, and you can see it in here when you take a look later on, but it's a four-port, 150 kilowatt charging station, so it's high power. When you look at the, the timing it takes to, to charge yourself up to about 50% or so, 20 minutes, 25 minutes, super fast. Uh, we have our first one on Maui, second one went in on Oahu at Alatau. Uh, we're looking at these two coming in before the end of the year. We'll be working with, um, I think this is a library or civic center, both civic centers on this side. Working with them to make sure we work on the implementation and, and let everybody know where these are gonna be and how you can use them. Next slide, please. These ones, I think we just put in just to show the greatest crosswalks that we had put in on the west side. Um, two went in, Kauai Road, um, by the community center, and, um, at Ulaa Lane. Those two went in because we're, we're prioritizing putting in speed management devices in any area, because we have crossings on state highways that are not signalized, um, that are going to schools or community centers. We know there's gonna be higher levels of conflict between bicyclists, pedestrians, and vehicles in those areas, so we're gonna put them in. These ones, we didn't go out to the community and ask, should we put them in? These ones, we put them in because we know they, they're working. Right now, across the state, when we put in raised pedestrian crosswalks, we see 33% reduction in speed on average in those, in those locations. About a 50% reduction in crashes, and a 67% reduction in, um, physical injuries to anybody in the system. And most importantly, no fatalities since 2019. So we're putting these in, about, I think we have about 230 throughout the system, on the state side and some of the county areas. We're looking at putting in more, um, and we have a, a map on our website that you can go on to to see where they're planned for. And you can also put your input in to see if we haven't covered an area that you think we need it, because you see speed or conflicts and the like, let us know. Next slide, please. Last piece is on what we're doing for fire right now. Um, Lahaina was big, definitely. But not made, a lot of people forget that the fire started on the Big Island first. And it was big, because Tim started videoing everything from his house, showing me the impact that were happening, um, in, in your neck of the woods. So for, for us, the DOT, we know that most of the areas that burned are the open fallow fields that big landowners have, whether they're private, state, or county, period. So when, when Lahaina occurred, we knew we couldn't build out emergency access roads, routes for all of your communities tomorrow. But we could start addressing the high, high priority areas that the, uh, fire, local fire departments consider dangerous. So we connected up with all of the fire departments locally, with Chief Todd here and his staff, to try and see what areas they saw as dangerous. And when we talked to them, we let them know, um, I don't care if the, if the land is private or state or county or eagle, whatever. Um, if there's a problem and they're concerned about it, we'll cut it. If they need fire breaks, we'll do it. If they need to clear the land, we'll do it. And we did it with our own funding, because in the end, if we can prevent any of those fires and affecting any of our communities, um, any of our structures, any of our people, we'll do it. Right now, so far, we spent about 10 million bucks on fire breaks throughout the state, which is a really small amount of money, uh, considering the damages that could occur in, in different areas. We're also gonna spend another couple million dollars to put in ROS, these, uh, remote weather stations, that allow us to get more information for, for red flag warnings. Um, during those storms, the big dangers are that humidity sucks and it blimp on. When that happens, when it dries everything out and you get a lot of wind, it gets really dangerous, especially because the houses in Wai, we designed them to make sure they're beautiful. So they go up in smoke pretty quickly. So we try, we try to make sure we give enough information so that everybody can make better decisions as we go forward on the emergency management side. For, for Maui, um, as Nancy had talked about, um, there's about 4,000 that lost their, their structures, their housing or, or their, and the like. So we've been building out, uh, governor asked us to put in about 1,000 units of emergency housing in different areas. We made sure that we put it in areas where we know those, those housing and that infrastructure we're building right now will benefit us into the future. So we're building on the HTL property, um, so we can bring more water, sewer power into that area. So once we're done with the emergency management piece, uh, DHTJ can take it over and hopefully, um, fulfill some of their requirements for their beneficiaries off faster. In other areas, we're working with developers to build on their properties and setting up agreements to ensure that we can minimize the costs to those in fire in the future, because the state paid for the infrastructure. But all those things kind of tie together to ensure that we're trying to take care of the people as much as possible, which is what the governor has recognized to do. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
That's awesome. Thank you.
Nice.
Sure, I have a few questions. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
All right. Let's, we got a bunch, so let's take it. Yeah, my name is Jojo, and I come from Kauai High. So you have Kauai High on there. So thank you very much for letting me ask a question. Number one is that harbor over there, the first one, homes is building, and you got three bridges that were being promoted, two, there's no room for people to walk and have the traffic. So how about keeping in mind we need the bypass? The one from the bypass all the way to the intersection at the Queen Gate and Kauai High. The other one, yeah, is the Queen Gate, Kauai High. Ever since Councilwoman, uh, Evans made the proposal to expand that, that area, it's stopped, so it's been there for years and years. The equals keep that in mind, because all the traffic is gonna come from Mauna La Hua, all the harbor, all the commercial, as that go to that one. And it's all gonna come up here. So if you are just in up here, don't forget the extra one coming from there, but we need that infrastructure. Bypass and Queen Gate intersection, please. Thank you.
So to, to Mr. Park. The Queen Gate, uh, Kuaingao Highway and Kauai High intersection. That area, we already designed it as additional, to widen that portion over there, just to make sure it's still a more efficient. The next piece is gonna be a signal over there, to make sure that it's safer, a lot more efficient. The longer term discussion could be a, a roundabout, we don't know, it could be strong, the geometry of the area, but the, the signal, the schedule, that way it goes there. The other piece, the Kauai bypass, is not going at all. Not at all. And let me tell you why. Uh, the last time we pushed the Kauai bypass, when we pushed up that, um, that EA, that design that we're pushing out on, on in that area, two things happened. First, we ran into at least 1,000 sites, archaeological sites, that required us to take many, many years to clean, if we could. Now, I gotta understand, on the federal side, once you touch an archaeological site, a 106 process, there is no limit. There's not like a 30-day review period that you get through and you're done. There is none. You start working on it, and you get done when you're done. That's it. Second piece, the number was 270 million at the time for that project. Was expensive at the time. I'm sure it's more now. I haven't even looked at the number recently, because we have no intent to move forward on that project unless we know exactly what we're gonna move forward. The last piece that we had, had trouble with, the, the Kauai bypass is not a bypass. It's a parallel right route to Kauai Road. The bypass is in Waimea, and the Waimea bypass is in HTL, and they just said, no, we're not gonna allow you to do it there. So the difficulty is, if I don't have a bypass to Waimea, there is no reason for me to build that parallel route, 20 seconds impossible. So that's kind of my take.
Makes sense.
I have several questions, but, um, one, one has to, to, uh, Kauai High Road. If, if we're gonna do like road improvements, how come we don't, what you call, uh, road improvements, to make it up to federal standards, which have eight-foot shoulders? That's a requirement, because you're getting federal monies. And also, why is the Kauai High Harbor, Harbor fee cheaper than the Hilo Harbor fees? Because you guys talk about the Green New Deal, and, and all of that money, and all of that trucks is costing us more gasoline and, you know, diesel and all of that. We, we're sending trucks from Kauai High to Hilo. How about improving the harbor in Hilos, so we don't have to have all of this so now, trucks have to...
Okay, okay, trucks. You guys ever heard me talking about the Green New Deal? Ready, Lee? Ready, Lee? So, first, it's not us that makes it more expensive for, for, for Kauai High and Hilo. It's not our fees. Matson, for Matson, it's more, it's cheaper for them to just drop off at Kauai High and ship it. That's it. It's cheaper for them. Their routes, their, their cost to run their, their cruise and everything is more expensive than dropping everything off in Kauai High and shipping it over to Hilo. That's their business decision. Now, we gotta see how we adjust, ensure that we can minimize the potential for destruction of the road and maximize the efficiency on Hilo side, which is why you saw we bought over 100 acres in that area, to ensure that we increase that area of laydown for that space. That being said, that doesn't mean that Matson's gonna make it more, uh, cheaper for, for them as well, to drop off in Hilo. In general, for everybody, all of New Harbor, Hub and Spoke, the, the Harbor, the Hub and Spoke system. The typical process is for, for young, uh, for Matson to, to go over to Kauai High, drop off about 40% of the goods there. Then go up to Hilo and drop off the other 60% there, because 60% of the, the goods are used there. They've found that it was way cheaper for them to hire out transportation on, on trucks than to just keep, keep going up to, to Hilo. Way cheaper for them, because they can turn their tongues around a lot faster. That's not my business. That's theirs. So we can talk to them about how we can minimize the potential for those trucks. Or we can, at, at home, we're just trying to adjust to ensure that we take care of those trucks on the road. Now, if you have a question about our standards, we always do a standard. I cannot build a federal route with federal money without fulfilling the federal standards. But if I build out eight-foot shoulders in different areas where I don't have the space, where I don't have the right of way, the party doesn't vote. So we gotta reconstruct the road to ensure that we take care of the, the conditions of the system the way all of you guys deserve it, we gotta take care of that piece top. And look at the longer term solutions on how we widen or how we expand it when the funding's ready.
Yeah, but see, like, the other road...
We're gonna take a couple of questions back here now.
All right, thank you. You know, the same DOT took over our highway, yeah, over here.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we, we, yeah. From Monoroad to Lakeland, every time it's maybe, every, you know, they start trimming trees, they start doing, and they stop. That's what freaking can be. Every time it's going, it stops. It's not little branches that's falling off, it's big trees. I know we had one fatality, a driver, tree falling apart. You know, at least we took the branches over the road, something, trimming them. You know, these trees are all, they're in their thinsight already. You know, their, their life expectancy is about 80 years or 40, 60 years. They're going down there.
Now, I wish you guys took them off before I took the road.
Hi. Um, thank you for acknowledging that we have a fire first. My question is, where are we with putting up fire breaks in Waimea?
I think we hit about two, uh, 30 miles of fire breaks so far. But if, and, and we're working with fire department on the areas that they prioritize. Um, we'll get the list out. We'll get the list out to the community. We'll put it on our website so everybody can see it. And if you guys see areas that you don't agree should be higher, or if you guys see areas that should be higher priorities than the ones that we have on the list, let us know, and we'll go hit it.
How do people let you know when they're concerned about something like that, a tree or whatever?
Yeah, so we have our, let me send out, send you Nancy, our information for all of our emergency hotlines that people can reach out to or at our DOT website where people can put in their questions, comments, or concerns.
Okay.
Jose, my question is for Kua High Harbor. There was a flooding back in May. Is there a timeframe to get the water and access back operating there?
Yeah, we looked at it in the end of the year, to get everything reset again. Yeah, and then just, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then just here, did everything reset again. But no, let me check back in, I'll get back up to Nancy and any other questions.
Maybe two more here.
I should have a couple of questions on it. You said there's really big charging stations around Waimea, isn't it?
Yeah.
So what's gonna power that?
People.
So like, oh, you still in front, you sure it's for a community, or is there...
And like, people come back up?
And then another one is those roundabouts. I know you guys were shopping on the H3 non-approaches, 'cause we had a Zoom meeting about that already. The one over here. We had a Zoom meeting with a bunch of truckers, guys owning companies, and when you guys planned this, no one was notified. I mean, to me, as far as important, if you guys should have had a meeting. I went to that meeting, and luckily, there was 13 people in that meeting. I mean, if you guys, you know, there's publicized history, too much people turned on. It was kind of sad that there's no, I mean, if you, that's what they struck something.
If you let talk on, we can, but again, we designed it for WB67s. You cannot drive a WB67 on the road. Then 125, 130 feet to cover a truck that's 70 feet long. So we can talk more about what you guys like to see in those areas. We could set a meeting up if you guys.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, we asking for one, yeah. We asked the state for those tickets. And what's gonna happen when that street back to the red?
All of that, all of that, we coordinate. So we'll go set the meeting, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Counting down.
Aloha, I'm from Akima hyphen Akau. And we've been doing some emailing. First of all, I'm a hollering because the Akau Ohana were two of three homes right across the Young Brothers, and we don't want the bypass above us. Secondly, I believe that the conversation should already start, because we have, my husband's family, the Akaus, have family graves right across the entrance. So we already, we need to start talking about that. Every morning when I leave home, and I go home, but especially coming up in the morning, like I said, I live across Young Brothers, I worry about the trucks running away on that Kua High Road. So we never hear anything about runway ramps for those trucks. And the truck drivers today are much more different than the truck drivers in the park. They come flying down there. The canal, so obviously, the storm that brother was talking about, we were affected by the water. All of that dirt still sits, and I believe that might be your folks' Kulaana right next to Young Brothers. It's full of dirt. What are we waiting for? That is when we're going to the ocean. And if you look now, from the Queen Kaua Manu Highway coming down, you can already see that our reef area is damaged from all of the mud that it has been going down into the ocean because it was flooded. So you folks really need to clean that up. One of the reasons why I wrote to you was in behalf of Kua High Community Club, of the speed bumps that we need at that north small boat harbor, especially during paddling season. And one reason is because when we have visitors, they don't, they think they're on the Pacific Coast Highway. They don't realize that it comes to a stop. So we really need that done. And the roundabouts, we live here, we go through the traffic, we follow those trucks. That's not gonna work here. But we need to carry, we need to continue conversation, please.
Thank you. You know what? We need to be finished here. It's gotten late, and we're half an hour late with the news. But we really thank you, Ed, appreciate it. Thank you all for being here, we appreciate it. Appreciate your interest in all these matters. So please be safe, and we'll want to vacate this room as quickly as we can and so we can all be on over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.